Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, September 20th Planning Gladstone Planning Commission Meeting. Can we please do a roll call?
Tammy? Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Milch.
Present.
Commissioner Labonte.
Present.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Present.
Mr. Mercero.
Here.
Commissioner Volbada. Chair Smith.
Present. Can we all do a flag salute, please?
Flag salute to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on our consent agenda this evening, we'll be doing the approval of the April 16th meeting minutes, and then our monthly planning report that will be given by Commissioner Milch. And then we have the appeal for the Planning Commission Interpretation of Home Occupation Business License for Adam Baker Tool Company. Okay, do, does anyone have any input, or was anyone going to go ahead and approve the meeting minutes?
I move approval of the meeting minutes of August 16th, 2022.
Okay, Commissioner Milch, I'm drawing a blank.
Made the motion.
Made the motion, and Commissioner Mercero seconded it. Tammy, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Milch.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. Meeting, meeting minutes approved. Next is our monthly planning report. Commissioner Milch, will you please present it?
Our planner, Joy Fields, is not in attendance tonight because there are no land use matters to be, to come before the commission. But she did submit a written report that shows in the month of August, she had one customer server service counter contact, seventy-five customer phone or email contacts, two building permits with land re-use review, one pre-application conference, and one administrative decision. As far as Planning Commission actions, actions and decisions, the downtown overlay district public hearing has been continued to October, so there was no action done on that, except the continuance of it. There were no city council land use actions or decisions. She had a pre-application conference related to item ZPAC 0101-22, which is a middle housing development and land division. I understand there's a piece of property not far from where we are here, where the owner is proposing to develop some middle housing and to divide the land in such a way that individual units can be sold. And we'll hear about that at some future date. She handled an administrative permit for signed permits for Chevron gas station, and a couple of building permits with land re-use review, one involving a garage, one involving an interior remodel. And then future items, in the month of October, the downtown overlay district, the C2 zoning amendments, SB 458 and HB 4064 zoning amendments. So we'll, we'll have a lot of zoning changes coming before us in the month of October.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. On to our regular agenda. Staff.
Sorry, this is my first Planning Commission meeting, so please bear with me. First, the agenda item, Appeal of the Planning Commission Interpretation of a Home Occupation License for Adam Baker Tool Company LLC at 7470 Case on Circle. That's, that's why we're here. Essentially, we're here to, to address a home occupation, the approval of a home occupation permit or license in this area. So I'll go ahead and read the history and background for you, for the record. Adam Baker resides at 740, 7470 Case on Circle, has a double axle snap-on tool vehicle. I'm sorry?
Chair, I'm sorry, can I interrupt everyone real quick?
Yes.
So, I know this is the first time that we've done this, and it's all a little bit confusing, but because this hearing is part of the Development Code, and the, the ordinance specifically incorporates the hearing procedures of the Development Code, we should still follow the general basic procedures that you do for a normal land use hearing. So before we get into the actual staff report, you should begin the hearing, you should open up the hearing, just like you would normally do, you should call for ex parte conflicts, ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest, and just try to follow as much of the normal hearing procedures as possible. Because, and then we should also, and I'm happy to do it if you want, talk about the applicable criteria that were, that is going to be used tonight to judge the application. And then, once we go through all that, turn it over to the chief to provide the staff report. And I'm sorry that that wasn't mentioned before.
No, that's fine. Thank you very much. Okay. Would like to open the public hearing for file number, just a moment here. I'm not seeing the file number.
There is no file number.
Oh, there is no file number, okay. That would explain it. This is for an appeal of a Planning Commission Interpretation of Home Occupations License for Adam Baker Tool Company at 7470 Case in Circle. Okay, I'd like to know if there's any abstentions from this hearing body regarding this. Commissioner Mercero?
None for me, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Can you define abstention for me?
Chad, could you please?
Yes, abstention is just if you're not going to participate, and in addition to abstentions, you should declare if you have any ex parte contacts or any conflicts of interest.
Okay. Let's start over again. Commissioner Mercero, do you have any abstentions, conflict of interest?
No conflicts of interest.
I have a potential conflict of interest. I do hold a city business license. I'm a managing partner in an inventory service. It, the use of my property entails about fifteen to twenty hours a month maximum of office work.
Commissioner Labonte?
No conflict.
Commissioner Milch?
I won't be abstaining. I have no ex parte contact and no conflict of interest.
Thank you. Langston?
Yep, I will not be abstaining. I've had no ex parte contact and no conflict of interest.
Okay, I have no conflict of interest, I won't be abstaining, and no ex parte. I would like the commissioners down here to, Mercero and Smith and Labonte, talk about ex parte. Do you have any ex parte, and have you visited the site?
No ex parte, I'm familiar with the site.
Pardon me, I visited the site twice within the last two weeks.
Yeah, I visited the site.
Excellent. Now where do, where do you want to go from here now, Chad? Is it, is it now appropriate to go into the staff report?
Yeah, let me just, real quick, just mention the fact that, you know, this is a appeal of a staff decision that granted the home occupation permit. It was, it was timely filed by the neighbors after they received notice. So the appeal is being brought to the Planning Commission for an interpretation of the home occupation license request from Adam Baker Tool. The applicable criteria that we're going to look at tonight is found in the City's Development Code, specifically in section seventeen point seven eight point zero two zero, Limitations on Home Occupations. These are provisions that, if they are not met, would be a basis for the Planning Commission to deny the application. If these criteria in seventeen point seven eight point zero two zero are met, then that would be a basis for the Planning Commission to uphold the staff decision and grant the home application permit. As part of the process, you should follow your normal land use procedures, so you should turn it over for a staff report. You should allow the appellant, if they're present, to make a presentation, as well as the applicant then to make a presentation. After the record is, after the hearing is closed, you should close the record, and then you will deliberate, and then direct staff about the interpretation that you would like to make. I'm happy to answer any questions about that process or the applicable criteria if you want.
Thank you very much, Chad. Chief Schmerber? Staff report, please.
Very good. Again, John Schmerber, Chief of Police, City of Gladstone. Thank you, Planning Commission. I'll go ahead and read the staff report as we move forward. I can say that the, the applicant is on Zoom, and the appellant is also in the audience, prepared to give testimony, I think, for both, both will. Adam Baker, who resides at 7470 Case on Circle, has a double axle snap-on tool vehicle that currently operates out of his business. Mr. Adams has employees reporting to, to and working out of his home, which was confirmed during an initial code enforcement contact on February 3rd, 2022. This complaint originated from neighbors, and the city has been attempting to negotiate with the applicant to approve a home occupation license. The City of Gladstone received a business license and home occupation license from Adam Baker in April of 2022. As part of the approval process, a notice of an approved home occupation permit letter was mailed to residents within one hundred feet of the applicant's home, advising residents, residents had until May 20th, 2022 to appeal. The city received an appeal prior to the deadline, and that citizen will provide comments to the Planning Commission. A letter was mailed to Mr. Baker advising of certain criteria included in the Gladstone Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point seven eight, that needed to be addressed prior to the business license issuance. Criteria included conforming the, confirming the dwelling was not being used as a headquarters for assembly of employees for instructions or other purposes, or to be dispatched for work at other locations. The premises shall at all times be maintained as residential in appearance, cleanliness, and quietness, and no more than three company branded vehicles, including a business trailer, is to be present at the residence at any time. After follow-up, the city advised the appellant, the business license had not been approved, therefore no appeal was allowed. Since that time, it was determined after consulting legal counsel, an appeal of the home occupation, not business license, can be allowed based on the current GMC language. Therefore, the issuance of a business license had been placed on hold while the city proceeds with the home occupation appeal process based on Chapter seventeen point nine four point zero five zero. In parentheses, there's five of the GMC attached. You should have that with your packet. Based on the GMC Chapter seventeen point seven eight point zero three zero four, the applicant is also requesting interpretation by the Planning Commission of GMC Chapter seventeen point seven eight, which again is attached. We have provided some options for you to consider. I think legal counsel has already shared some of that, but the Planning Commission can uphold the appeal and revoke Mr. Baker's home occupation license, or the Planning Commission can uphold the approval of the home occupation license. If this is approved, the city will move forward with the issuance of a business license. Any questions?
Commissioner Mills, do you have any questions? Commissioner Langston?
None at this time.
Commissioner Mercero?
No questions for me, pretty.
Commissioner Smith?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Andrew?
No questions at this time.
I don't have any right now at this time either. So we do have public testimony?
Yes, we do.
Okay, let me go ahead and read the following statements. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, it cannot be raised later in any appeal. Your comment should state why the application should or should not be approved, or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. Because this is the initial evidentiary hearing, state law grants any party the right to request a continuance of this hearing, or ask that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing, or by close of the, close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government's its designee to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on the particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Okay, so, let's go, let's start with our public testimony, please.
Chad, do you want to start with the applicant or the appellant first?
So we should start with the appellant first, since they're the ones who brought the appeal.
Mr. Ormay, if you would come up to the front here.
My name is George Orm. In my appeals sent on the 7th of May, I, I went item by item. I studied the Gladstone Municipal Code sections about notice of, of home occupation, and
Please make sure you speak close to the mic, so we get your full.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's fine, thank you.
And I laid out these bullet points that there have been changes to the property. The applicant built a driveway, in basically in his front yard, to park one of the vehicles, which is visible up and down the street. The other vehicle is parked on the other side of his property. Both vehicles have advertising on both sides. There are employees who report each morning before they leave for other locations, driving the company vehicles. The applicant's business is the principal source of income, not supplementary. All aspects of the home occupation are not confined to the dwelling or an enclosed accessory building. There are the step vans, a pickup truck, and a trailer with the company name on the sides, parked in the street or in the driveway. As I mentioned earlier, there are signs advertising the business with the applicant's name and phone number on the exterior of two of the trucks and the trailer. These signs are visible at all times. And there is periodically storage of materials associated with the business outdoors when deliveries are made from, from trucks. So those are the points I wanted to raise.
Do you have anything further?
Only the photos I sent today and the email to all of you, that's showing that, yeah.
You can receive them, thank you.
Okay, great. That's it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now going to bring Mr. Baker in via Zoom.
Is it working?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, yes.
Can you please state your name for the record, please?
Yes, Adam Baker.
Please provide us with your testimony.
Okay, so I, the snap-on tool business, Adam Baker Tool Company, is not a home occupancy. I drive my work vehicle home. I happen to have two of them. The driveway that Mr. Orm is talking about, or I should say, in my yard, is actually a driveway that is adjacent to his driveway, and he had mentioned in an email that I was against code by parking the truck on the street, and so I made my own driveway on my property, a second driveway, and then now that's where the, the vehicle resides. So it's off the street now. I'm not blocking anyone. I don't conduct business here. I simply have a work vehicle that I bring home with me, like many of you do as well. I, it's a mobile tool sales company, and there's no business here. I have inventory, yes. Just like everyone else has, Amazon show up. I have Amazon and UPS show up as well. So I'm, I'm on my property with my vehicle. I, I have one employee, and we travel up and down McLaughlin to dealerships and other repair facilities to sell and warranty their, their tools. So, yeah, I've lived here seventeen years, going on eighteen, and I believe I'm a positive impact to the local economy, so I, I don't see the issue. In fact, I, I don't even believe that I should have to file for a home occupancy business, but I did anyway because I was told I should, and so I did. But I don't really feel that my business is a home occupancy business. So I, I guess that's, that's all I have, is I, I happen to take my work vehicle home and park it in my driveway. Yes, I have two driveways on my property. I'm off the street, and yes, I have deliveries like everybody else does, so I, I just don't understand how that, you know, it would, would be an issue. And as far as income goes, I'm not sure he knows, George understands any of that, or where he's getting the primary source of income. But that's, that's different discussion, I guess, of where, where my money comes from, and how we earn it. So that, that's what I have. I, I drive my, my work vehicle home every night, and I conduct business off, off-site, not here, at my residence.
Is that all that you have for this evening?
There were a couple of, and again, I'm not sure if, if, if I'm appealing that I even need a home occupancy license, then I guess it's a moot point for the things I was in quote-unquote violation of. You know, having a clean curb appeal, having, you know, there's a couple of items on there that I just, I don't have the letter in front of me, but those would all be, I guess, a moot point if, I don't even need a home occupancy license anyway. But if I do, I guess I need to talk about what I'm in violation of. So I don't know if that's done here, or if that's done at a separate meeting.
Do you have a question, Andrew?
Yeah, I guess that, that would be, my only question would be, how, you know, can you address some of the, the items that were mailed to you that were cited?
Well, yeah, I guess the part of them, well, some of them are listed here in the, in the letter. Criteria, let's see. The dwelling has not, was not supposed to be used as headquarters for the assembly of employees, so you know, I, I, we're not really assembling anything, where he's getting in the vehicle and, and driving the route. The premises shall at all times be maintained as a residential in appearance, cleanliness, and quietness. I don't, you know, to me, how would I be in violation of that when I, I just, I, I park two work vehicles here on my property, and, and I, I don't have any signage, it's not noisy, I, we, we live here, family of four. I don't, you know, I don't know what, I don't even let my kids play out in the front yard. I don't know what being quiet. And I guess, what, where does it mention that no more than three company branded vehicles, including business trailers, to be present on the residence at any time? Is, is there a certain rule that says I, I can't? I mean, it's, again, I, there's, I don't have hundreds. There's, there's two trailer, or one trailer and two company vans, and so, and there, I even have a, a guy that comes every two to three weeks to wash all my vehicles, so I, I just don't understand any of these code violations, I guess. So maybe somebody can tell me why I'm in violation of said statements.
Okay, thank you very much, and I'm going to call upon Chief Schmerber to go ahead and give a recap and a recommendation, and perhaps you can explain to this gentleman what some of the codes are?
Yes. Mr. Baker, I, I, when we looked at Chapter seventeen, which states no dwelling shall be used as headquarters for assembly of employees for instructions other than the purposes or to be dispatched for work, that's other employees showing up at the, at, at, actually the residence itself. And whether it's giving directions, or that's the base of where the employee shows up, so that's where that violation occurred, or that's what's in question right now. States the scale of operation shall be strictly limited in nature. Again, that goes to more of the assembly, that's, that's still going to be part of that. The premise shall at all times be maintained as a residential in appearance, cleanliness, and quietness. That's, that's, I guess that's up for interpretation. I, I think that's why you're here asking the Planning Commission, what is that, what does that mean? And that's why we're all here. With regards to the assembly of no more than three company branded vehicles, that kind of fell on us on the, kind of the reasonable standard, when we put that in there. With regards to premise shall be maintained as a residential in appearance and cleanliness and, and quietness, so we try to be reasonable with, with, with the understanding of vehicles there. So as much as, as much as we're looking at the code, we're also trying to be reasonable as to, you have a business, and we know, we know working's important, and yes, that does give back to the community. So that, that was the standard while we're in there.
And I don't plan on expanding. I'm, I'm out of room here, so if I, if I do, it's, it's going to be at a different residence or location, and I will probably be moving if I continue to grow, but I, I don't plan on adding any more vehicles, so how it is today is, is it's as, as big as it's going to get, until I do move, if that's what I end up doing, so it's, I believe in its current situation, it's, I'm clean, tidy, I'm off the street, nothing, you know. I, I believe I'm passing, with the exception of, I, I, I have one employee that does come to my residence to then use the, the second vehicle to then, you know, conduct business offsite. So I guess that would be essentially a code violation, and I'll have to figure, I'll have to figure that part out.
I was hoping for some clarification, Mr. Baker. On your City Gladstone Business License application, it says total number of employees, list two, are you including yourself as one of those employees?
Correct.
Again, Chief Schmerber, what would your recommend, recommendation, could you please provide that?
That's, that's difficult for me to, to do. As much as I, I hate provide, saying this, it's really the Planning Commission's decision on a recommendation to interpret and, and authorize this. We have someone who's in appeal, and, and then obviously the applicant here.
You're going to leave it to us?
I'm going to leave it to you, I think, yes.
Yes, go ahead, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. Baker, for being here this evening. You mentioned that this is not the headquarters of your business. Do you have an address that is the headquarters for your business?
No, again, it's a mobile tool sales, so the office is actually located onsite, inside the vehicle. So there is an office built inside the vehicle.
Any other questions, Commissioner Labonte?
I'm trying to sort that one out.
Okay.
Yeah, there's not really, there's not an address. It's, it's a mobile.
So with the state, and I'm, I guess, the Secretary of State, where, where would your business be registered?
It's registered to this house.
Okay.
Okay. Item, oh, sorry. Item number four, under limitations of, on home occupant, occupant, occupation, sorry. Says all aspects and conduct of the home occupation shall be confined, contained, and conducted within the dwelling, or within a completely enclosed accessory building. Would you feel that you fall under that, that particular?
It's seven o'clock.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I have, there's no inventory whatsoever that's outside the residence. I might have a pallet or cardboard that's in the back of my, my pickup for when I get deliveries in the, in the recycle containers, you know, full, but I have But I have a a two-car garage that uh has any of my overflow and also have a a shed behind my carport that UPS actually has the lock to. They can get in and drop off my packages. So nothing is exposed. Uh, in fact, uh, most, if not all, my inventory is inside the mobile vehicles. If I don't have it on the van, then I can't sell it if it's in the garage. So most of my inventory is in fact on the vehicle itself.
Okay, and I guess I'm pointing out this specific language that it's saying that it should be your operation should be confined in the dwelling. But you're stating that it's in the truck, correct?
Right, there's nothing inside the dwelling other than what everyone else has in their garage. So I don't, there's nothing inside my dwelling in regard to business.
So I I guess, um, I I guess I would, like, just my interpretation of reading that is that the the home occupation provision allows you to do the work in your home specifically, right? Because it specifically says the dwelling. Or then
Correct.
Completely enclosed accessory building.
That's why I'm here, because it doesn't meet the criteria.
Sure, okay.
Um, I'm just gonna go down the list here and ask some of our uh commissioners if they have any further questions and then if there's any rebuttals. Commissioner Milch.
Um, as I read the home occupations uh code, um, it it's the typical example that fits under this is a someone who teaches piano lessons out of their home. You have a piano in your living room or in a studio, which is there, whether it's a residence or not. You bring students to the home, one at a time. They come in, they have their lesson, they leave. It's a very minimal disruption to the residential neighbor uh uh nature of the neighborhood. Uh, the other type, this a business which perhaps is a little more similar to Mr. Baker's business is someone who, and I don't even know if people do this anymore, but the uh examples that occurred to me are an Amway salesperson or a uh Tupperware salesperson, someone who has some inventory delivered to their home and uh occasionally uh has uh events perhaps in the home, perhaps elsewhere that involve the sale of that. That seems a little closer to what Mr. Baker's describing. Um, but eh, there doesn't seem to be any question to me based on the evidence that this home is the address of the business. Uh, the use of the van may be instrumental in uh uh, you know, in uh conducting the business. But uh, this is the address that's on his social security, uh, I mean, uh, Secretary of State application. Uh, I would imagine it's the address he uses on any social media or uh in the in their internet advertising for the business. Um, and so the question is whether it's complying with uh the specific criteria which are designed to minimize its impact on a residential neighborhood. Uh, and I think the the comments that Mr. Orm made uh make me believe that uh, first of all, that this this is intended to be a home occupation business. Uh, Mr. Baker's statement that he doesn't believe it, it is. Uh, I don't, I don't accept that. Um, but that I think the the limitations regarding structural alterations in order to accommodate the business uh, and um, there's some dispute over the number of employees or reporting and being dispatched. But I think by by several of this criteria, um, uh, I don't believe this um, should be given a home occupation uh permit.
Commissioner Langston, do you have any other comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, I, that's, I I'm struggling to 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 see how um this particular uh entity would would fall under uh the the criteria for home occupy occupation. Acceptance, yeah.
Commissioner Mercero, any input?
Uh, my questions from Mr. Baker are uh with the two trucks that I see from pictures. I think you're only required one square foot of signage. But with these two trucks with signs on all sides red and white at that seems to make that sound like it's a quite a bit of advertising. I also was noted, and I'm gonna ask, what do you have as materials and storage at the premises?
I have uh, like in the garage, there are a couple of uh toolboxes, uh, same with the shed. So there's uh, and some overstock like socks and hand soap, consumable items.
Is that the end of your answer?
Uh, yes, that's that's all, other than personal effects.
My uh, another question is, do you sell at home?
No.
So nobody ever comes to your house to buy tools?
No. No, I I have, I visit commercial businesses and those are my call list, my my stops, if you will. And that's where the business is conducted there. At each of those stops, which I have about fifteen a day, Monday through Friday.
So no neighbors ever come by tools?
No, they they're really expensive. They would not, no. They may come over and borrow one because that's what good neighbors do, right? But no.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, please.
Mr. Baker, excuse me, I have a couple of uh, um, more of a comment in nature than question. The chief specifically uh mentioned seventeen dot seven eight dot O two O parentheses seven, which uh describes maintaining uh your uh home uh business is uh residential in appearance cleanliness and quietness. That's that's a hard thing to describe. As I drove, as I drove through the neighborhood today, you know, there are homes of uh various sizes, uh cared for in various uh term I'm looking for here. Some people take better care of their homes than others, but you're clearly in a residential neighborhood when you drive up your street and around to the right and then come back. In my opinion, your home is an outlier and that, uh, none of the other homes in the neighborhood look like yours do. That doesn't mean it looks bad. It just is out of character according to this fairly gray regulation in our city uh planning. As I looked at your property today, uh, I noticed you had a couple of of uh snap-on vehicles there. On the east side of your, I I believe it was the garage, you had pallets leaning, pallets or skids leaning up against the building. Uh, according to the letter uh the city administrator sent you on May nineteenth, I fail to see where the three things that she has called out have been addressed. It it seems to me you're more, and as opposed to addressing them, you're kind of defending uh what you've done uh to to set these aside. And basically, your property is used as a warehouse and distribution center, even though the business isn't done there. You accept products, you assemble them onto your vehicles, and then you go distribute them. So uh, a warehouse distribution center is is a pretty much of an on-premise business, which as I see it, is what you're using your home for.
No further questions.
Okay, then, if we don't have any other questions, are there any rebuttals from either side? Mr. Baker, you have no rebuttals?
Well, uh, you know, other than the pallets that do, when I have occasionally, you know, a toolbox or two that does arrive, I do have to take time to, you know, break those down and uh, you know, disassemble or discard them. Um, I'm I'm not, I'm not seeing a warehouse distribution center because it's just, it's just me uh in a truck. I don't I'm I'm, there is, there is no warehouse. I I receive product that's just enough to fill the truck if and there's a couple it left in the garage and the shed. So I don't know. To me, a warehouse distribution center is kind of like a Costco, Safeway warehouse, that kind of thing. So I, you know, I guess I disagree with that statement. I guess that's all I have for that to.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. If there's no further um items to bring forward, I would like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, at seven twelve, a public hearing has been closed. A motion was made by Commissioner Langston and seconded by Commissioner Smith. Roll call vote, please, Tammy.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero?
I want to make sure I understand what I'm saying, yes, too.
That we're closing the public hearing right now so we can open it up for discussion.
Thank you, yes.
And Chair Smith?
Yes, um, meeting, uh, public meeting is closed. Okay, discussion.
Chad, did you, uh, did you have something to say?
I was just gonna say, uh, Chair Smith, you said public meeting and you, I think you meant public hearing is closed.
Public hearing, thank you. Public hearing was closed at seven twelve.
Perfect. So then just to uh kick you off on your deliberations, the commission basically has three options as far as its interpretation tonight. It can uphold the preliminary staff decision to grant the home occupation permit. It can uphold staff decision to grant the home occupation permit with conditions. So for example, you could have a condition that uh you must that that's granted on the condition that there's compliance with, for example, the three items outlined in the city manager's letter. Um, or you could deny the home occupation permit based on the fact that you don't believe uh, that the criteria in the code have been met. So those are the three options that you have before you. Uh, what I would suggest is that you deliberate and you provide some feedback as to why that decision, you know, is going to be made. And then per- pursuant to the provisions of the code, what we'll do is, um, once you sort of render your decision and the basis why, we will uh draft a staff report um to bring back to you um with the final order for you to approve at your next meeting.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Milch, would you like to start off, please?
Just reading the code section that that applies here, uh, no servant employee or any person other than a member or members of the family residing within the dwelling shall engage in home occupation therein or within an accessory building. Mr. Baker did not indicate that the employee coming to the home uh was a member of the family, so I don't think that condition is met. No dwelling shall be used as a headquarters with the assembly of employees for instructions or other purposes or to be dispatched for work at other locations. Um, that's exactly what the uh site is being used for, is to have an employee come and be dispatched to another location. So it does not meet that criteria. Um, the scale of operations shall be distinctly limited in nature and conducted primarily as a supplementary and not principal source of the family income or as an accommodation for handicapped or retired person or as a starter operation for a limited period only until its size or other characteristics compel relocation to the appropriate non-residential district. Uh, Mr. Baker did say that it would be his intent to relocate to a larger location if the uh, business were to uh expand. So uh, for the time being, even though I I do believe Mr. Orm's testimony that this is probably a uh more than a supplementary source of family income, uh, we could consider it a starter business and and I'd be willing to go uh okay on that one. No significant enlargements or alterations to a dwelling or accessory building for the sole purpose of conducting a home occupation shall be permitted. If Mr. Baker did not have two large vans uh for the use of the distance, he would not have uh, modified his driveway. So I don't think that this, uh, I know, I think he's violated this condition as well. Um, and so uh, I I I'm leaning toward um approving the appeal from Mr. Orm of the decision to grant the home occupation license.
Commissioner Langston.
Yep, uh, I think uh, I'm in agreement with uh Commissioner Milch. Uh, the, I don't, I see nothing wrong with the the company or anything, just based on uh, our our code here. I I just don't feel that it fits um the home occupation guidelines. Um, and as uh Commissioner Milch was indicating, the nature of a lot of the business that would fit in this, uh, it, his is slightly different in that, you know, this is where he's bringing um his stuff home. Uh, and he's not, it's not concealed in 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 the dwelling, you know, it's it's, his stuff is there because he lives there. He's not running business from there. So I just, I just don't see how it fits under uh this ordinance.
Commissioner Mercero.
Uh, so far, we've heard from Commissioner Mills and uh Commissioner Labonte.
Langston. Langston.
Langston, sorry, sorry. And uh, I ca- I hadn't find anything that they said that I disagree with, and in fact, I do agree with them.
Commissioner Smith.
Pardon me, I find myself in agreement with my colleagues on this commission. Um, and specifically, I'll go back to the uh to the line in the letter that the that the chief referenced about, it's hard to explain, but I think the the piece of property that where Mr. Baker is living and operating his business is clearly outside the scope of all the other homes in the neighborhood, which to me uh would not be maintaining as residential in appearance cleanliness and quietness. I I wish, I wish you well, Mr. Baker. I hope you end up with lots of employees and make a lot of money. It's just, uh, I just don't see how you can do it where you are.
Commissioner Labonte.
I agree with the uh other commissioners' uh comments.
Well, if there isn't any further discussion, I would entertain a motion to make a decision. Remember, there is no file number.
If it would be helpful, based on the comments that everyone just said, the motion should be something along lines of a motion to overturn the city administrator's decision to grant a home occupation permit for the applicant. Uh, I think it's Baker Tools.
Adam Baker Tool Company?
Adam Baker Tool Company. Um, based on the, and then we'll come back with you. If this motion is approved, we'll come back with a a s- a staff report with actual findings and an order for you to prove at your next meeting.
This is Commissioner Milch. I move that the planning commission uphold the appeal and uh overturn the uh granting of a uh home occupation license for Adam Baker Tool Company LLC. I'll second.
Okay. Tammy, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Mercero.
I agree with opposing the home occupation permit.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Motion passes.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, please.
Um, I I don't like, you know, denying someone a one of the principal sources of their income. Um, but we we need to comply with the law that we have now. Uh, it may be that we're, eh, there's a time when um, you know, we need to give people more opportunities to do business within residential areas, uh, perhaps expanding Perhaps expanding, loosening some of the restrictions that we have. Because there are some benefits for for having more services in the community, more access to various business types, and even within residential areas, it may be appropriate. So I would hope that as a commission, we would, if if a citizen wants to come forward and propose changes to our code that would make it possible for this type of business to operate within some reasonable limitations that we would entertain that and hear that because it could ultimately reduce the the amount of driving that people have to do to to get some to a business that they need in their community and ultimately improve the the quality of life and livability by enhancing, you know, the the number of business opportunities and service opportunities that are out there.
Alrighty then. Double check here. Do you have any business from the public?
I've received no request to speak. No.
Hey, thank you. Business from the planning commission. I'll start with Commissioner Mercero?
No business at this time.
Commissioner Smith?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Commissioner Labonte?
No business.
Commissioner Milch?
Last week and the week before, I represented the planning commission on a small committee that was to interview candidates to fill the position of essentially city planner for the city of Gladstone to replace the contract position that we had with Clackamas County. We got very good input from Joy herself in reviewing the initial applications they come that came in. We narrowed it down to a couple of applicants and had interviews last week and made a decision. I believe Jackie has informed you of that decision. I won't announce it here because I don't know whether the contract has been accepted. But the process is good. The involvement of city staff and elected officials and the direct interview process is very helpful. And we are looking for someone who will do a broad range of services in in the planning area. Do what what Joy has done, be the staff person to bring things to us. Do we do what Joy does behind the scenes that we don't see, but talking to applicants and helping them and holding their hands through the process and getting, you know, an application to us in you know, in a form that's ready for action by the by the commission. And also, one of the most important things that we looked for and we were pleased to find in in several of the firms was a willingness to sort of act as we we termed it a cheerleader for planning for development under some of the new code guidelines or codes that we have adopted, particularly those for middle housing and ADUs. We are seeing this as the future of the way that Gladstone will deal with the housing needs that we have identified through analysis. And so we want a planner that won't just wait for applications to come in, but who might actually take some proactive steps in informing the community of what some of these options are and how they can, you know, use their own land to the best of its value by taking advantage of them. So I I look forward to the announcement of of that contract and to working with a new group of people. I will say again, Joy was very helpful. Her perspective on this was quite helpful to the committee. And Tammy Bannock was part of the committee as well as the mayor and Jackie Betts and John Southgate, our economic development consultant. That's all I have.
Commissioner Milch, if I could ask if this should come to fruition, is there a timeline attached when this would begin?
Yeah, I think the the idea was it would start in at the beginning of the next calendar year so that Joy's term, her or the the work with the county would end at the end of December and they would start. And we we had a specific budget in mind. You know, we may decide that for the amount of services we need, we need to may need to take a look at that budget, but that's that's a decision for another body.
Commissioner Langston?
No business to share today. Thank you.
Well, I don't have anything to share either, so I would definitely entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I move we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Commissioner Milch made the motion to adjourn the meeting and Commissioner Langston seconded. Tammy, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned at seven twenty six. Thank you.